Together and develop the Family Justice Center. Now it's a model for across the state and other communities that want to do the same thing. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank all of you for this award.
(applause)
(inaudible)
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 Mr. President, thank you so much. I said two things. I wanted to start off with a positive, and I'm going to stay with a positive, and that is, I'm going to move right to our financial update at this time, and the numbers right now are very positive. And we have the first slide. We can see right here with the sales and use tax, looking at first couple of months of the fiscal year, that our taxes have gone up 4.57 percent. Round that up, and I'd like to say 5 percent to November 2020. The economy continues to be stimulated by both local sales and online sales, which we're really seeing from a wealth of cash in the economy. Since we're in the holiday season, we believe that this trend will continue going into December, and we'll continue to see those sales and use taxes increase, and we believe they'll exceed 5 percent for the month of December, year over year. Second slide, please. When we look at the lodging tax, again, we see positive news. Particularly, look at October. We see October coming in at about 47 percent, and we see November coming in at about 17 percent. Both of these are year-over-year numbers that we're seeing in our lodging tax. Overall, that means we're coming in slightly more than 31 percent, and as more events come in our city, we anticipate the lodging tax revenue will continue to increase. Local hotels definitely have a higher room occupancy than they did a year ago, and this too is proof that the economy is steadily improving. And I think this goes into, again, the information that we have gathered, and we were doing some data right now to get the specifics about where demand is for downtown and for tourism. We anticipate a very strong start to next year, and I think that is positive, not only for our hotel industry, but it's positive also for our small businesses, our retailers, and others who are looking for those tourism dollars, and for our CBB, which does a great job of going out and recruiting events to our city. I think it also lends to the possibility of us to have further discussions about adding hotel capacity to the city so that we can accept larger events which want to come to Montgomery, both faith-based events and other organizational events that are coming here. I know we had a recent event, President Jim Wright out there, Gary Coliseum, which brought a lot of people in. I know you expressed your satisfaction with that, and we want those tourists not just to come in and leave, but we want them to come in and stay overnight, and we want them to eat out, we want them to have a good time, and I think as things start to get a little better as it relates to the pandemic, I believe that we'll see much more traffic and much more activity coming to our downtown and other parts of the city. Next slide. Here we're looking at the gasoline tax, and while we have this number in the negative of nearly 3 percent year-over-year, the revenue did increase in November by nearly 5 percent compared to November 2020. We were expecting this year from negative growth rate to a positive growth rate because of the holiday season, but we still expect this trend to continue going into the new year. Last slide, please. Alcohol beverage tax revenue increased more than 6 percent in November over the same period in FY 2021. Year-over-year, the revenue stream has a negative growth rate of nearly 2 percent. Since growth rate in November increased significantly, we expect the collections in December will do equally as well. Again, this will be true, but we're, we have to be reminded we're in the midst of the holiday season, so we have a lot of optimism in our approach. Finally, or not projection, excuse me. Finally, once the majority of revenue from business licenses and Avalon licenses, Avalon taxes have been posted to the general ledger, we'll start presenting a report to you on the city's financial position as it relates to the collection of revenue and expenditures incurred. The first report will likely be presented in early March 2022, but certainly if you have any questions, you need any further detail, we'll make sure that we can provide that to you. That will provide a conclusion to our executive summary, and now, just want to get to a few events that we have coming up, but before I get to one that's right around the corner, I do want to apologize to the council for failing to get you the proper notice on an event that the city sponsored last night, and that was an event commemorating the 66th anniversary of the mass meeting around Montgomery Bus Boycott. That communication did not reach you all in time, and that is a mistake on our part, so I want to apologize to you for that and not making sure that it got to you so that you could come and participate. We did have a fantastic program with a number of faith leaders from all religions, Jewish, Catholic, Protestant, we had everybody there, and we had a great cross-section of people from the city, and a great message was delivered by Bishop J. Drew Shear, from Church of God in Christ out of Detroit, Michigan. And we had the Trenton College Chorale that provided the music. So, it was a great event. It was streamed on Capital City TV, and so you're certainly open to check that out, and if nothing else, check out the message that he delivered, and in light of us not having a historian there, I tried to do the best job I could of giving a brief history of how that came about, but again, we'll make sure that in the future you get those notices in much clearer time, much more advanced notice than you did last night, so that's on us. Now, for Christmas on the River, we invite you to join us tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM for a different type of Christmas event at 6:00 PM at Riverfront Park. This is a free, family-friendly event. It's going to be fun and festive with performances from students at Montgomery Public Schools. We'll have some hot cocoa and marshmallows they promised me, along with some fireworks. We'll also like the city's Christmas tree, which stands 35 feet tall and was donated by a local businessman, Jack Galacini. And so we're really trying to enliven and do more with our Riverfront, and this is the beginning of that, and so some of the feedback we got with the Christmas tree kind of being right across City Hall, if you come out of here at any time, it doesn't matter what time of day, somebody's blaring down Perry Street, doing about 60 miles an hour, it doesn't matter, the mayor's office is there or not. I'm scared to cross the street sometimes, but, you know, we didn't really quite have the family-friendly accessibility that we wanted, so we want to bring more people down to the Riverfront, and this is the beginning of what we would like to see, not just around Christmas, but year-round, to really amplify the use of that space, and there's some great ideas that are out there, not only how to improve it during the holiday season, but also throughout the year. And so this, we hope, will become a new location and hopefully start a positive tradition for people to come and bring their families, take pictures with Santa Claus around the Christmas tree, and to enjoy some of the vendors and just to enjoy this space on the river. We also want to remind the public that we'll be hosting Montgomery's Christmas Parade on Friday at 6:00 PM. It's presented by Sands Club, and we'll start at the Capitol and wind down Dexter Avenue to Court Square. And as a warning, I want to share with you something I learned in my first parade, save your candy to the end, because you throw out all your candy before you get there, you might not like what you hear toward the end. So I found that out the hard way. I was a little too generous at the beginning, so just make sure you're portioning that out a little bit. So we hope to see everybody at the Christmas Parade on Friday. Now I will move to a proclamation that the city, I'm sorry, we'll cover the Commedia Bowl. The Commedia Bowl is going to be Saturday, and we've got two great teams in this bowl game, and Georgia State, I'm really looking forward to see play. They've had a very good year this year, along with Ball State, who's been here before. For those of you who aren't familiar with Georgia State there and City of Atlanta right in downtown, and I believe they have some young men that are from this area, at least they did, on the team, and very good program, and Ball State's, of course, from Indiana. So we're looking forward to a great crowd coming from Georgia State and coming from Atlanta for this game. It starts at 1:30 PM, and it is the only game on Christmas Day, and it was the highest-rated event that ESPN had last year on Christmas Day, and I believe it was either the first or the second highest of all the bowl games that ESPN had outside of the college football playoffs. So it's a great opportunity to showcase Montgomery. We want everybody to come out and try to spread the word and support this great event that we have, and there'll be a lot of things coming up to it, and I think it's going to be a great opportunity for us and for our community to showcase the city, and hopefully we'll have the great weather this year like we had last year, so let's cross our fingers on that. Now I will go to, just very briefly, a proclamation that I signed regarding antisemitism, and what I want to highlight is that yesterday, many of our friends and neighbors who were part of Montgomery's Jewish community celebrated the final night of Hanukkah. In a message of solidarity and support, Montgomery observed antisemitism week. Our city was part of an unprecedented coalition of over 60 American and Canadian Jewish and non-Jewish organizations and corporations who launched Shine a Light. This is a comprehensive initiative to illuminate the dangers of antisemitism through education, community partnerships, workplace engagement, advocacy, and media. We look forward to continuing to build this partnership and initiative, and so I want to thank the entire city for being in partnership with this during this week of Hanukkah, and it's just another way, again, for us to show our growth and show our appreciation for diversity and respecting differences in this community, and it was something that was well-received not only by those here in the local Jewish community, but around the nation, so we're glad to be a part of that. Finally, I believe, just want to give Montgomery Public Schools their kudos for being released from state intervention. That is a positive step for our public schools. It's been a lot of hard work. We have, I know two councilmen that work in the public schools and are on the front lines, excuse me, of that work, and so after four years, we're glad that the school system can now move forward, and we can look at ways to reinvest in our teachers, our staff, and our students and parents, and I believe this is the first step toward a new beginning moving forward. So just wanted to bring all of that to the attention of the council, and I appreciate all that you do, and thank you, everybody, for being here. Mr. President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Very good, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Kurt. Item number one.
Mr. President, item one, hearing on proposed ordinance, rezoning one parcel of land containing 2.579 acres located on the north side of Alabama River Parkway, approximately 700 feet east of Lori-Tumpka Road from, and that should be an R-65S district to a B-2 district.
Tommy?
Mr. President, the planning commission recommended the rezoning of this property to accommodate a landscaping business.
Okay. Mr. Bennett, are you here? Is that you?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Guthrie, Mr. Jeff, here somewhere too? Just want to recognize that you're here. This is a public hearing. Anyone who likes to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, declare the public hearing's been held. It's proper for the council to motion.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
That's what I need. All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Proud you expanded. Item number two.
I was forgetting one of my council members. I lost one of them.
You lost one?
Mrs. Brand is back there. I couldn't see.
Oh, she's.
She raised her hand. Item two, hearing on proposed ordinance, rezoning the north portion of a parcel located on Upper Weytumpka Road west of Clifford Law's Drive containing 0.66 acres from an R-65S district to a B-2 district.
Tommy?
Mr. President, the planning commission recommended the rezoning of this property to allow Gaiet Roofing and Construction to expand their operations.
Mr. Gaiet's here? Yeah. I saw you. This is a public hearing. You can come in. Your name for the record, so we got any records that you hear?
My name is William Gaiet, owner of Gaiet Uffy.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who likes to speak against this item, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, declare the public hearing's been held. It's proper for the council.
Mr. President, a motion to approve.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
Item three, hearing on proposed ordinance, rezoning one lot located on the south side of Buckingham Drive, east of Norman Bridge Road from an O-1 district to an R-75S district.
You're here, Representative?
Yes, sir.
Your name is?
My name is Valentin Trujillo. I just come and interpret for the owner of the residence.
Okay, you're owning, okay. Tommy, go ahead.
Mr. President, the planning commission recommended the rezoning of this property to accommodate single-family residential use.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone who likes to speak against this item, please come forward. I assume all three of you for this item. Anybody against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, declare the public hearing's been held. It's proper for the council, any motion?
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Most to adopt. All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Good luck. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Item four, hearing on proposed ordinance, rezoning one parcel located on the southeast corner of M Street and Highland Avenue from an R-60S district to a B-2 district.
Okay. Tommy?
Mr. President, the planning commission recommended the rezoning of this property to allow for small business use.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and anyone who likes to speak against this item, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Steve John.
Are you against this item?
Yes.
Are you against it? Are you for it? You're the owner?
Yes.
Okay. I'm asking for anybody that's against it, but you can stay with me, okay? I got you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, declare the public hearing's been held. It's proper for the council, any motion?
Mr. President, motion to adopt.
Most to adopt. All in favor, raise your hand.
Eight, unanimous.
Good luck with your property.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Item five, resolution approving the issuance of a business license for a rental hall event center doing business as elevated events, 3645 Denny Drive.
Anybody here represent this item? Ms. Ivy? Give me your name, please.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Ms. Ivy.
Pull the mic down where you can hear.
How are you? I'm Ms. Ivy.
Okay. All right. Ma'am, you want to tell us what's going on with this item?
We have concerns about the licensure of this particular business as a rental hall. We have received intel that they had a video where they were advertising all types of activities prior to licensure, and we also have pictures of activities that they've been conducting prior to being licensed, so we have strong concerns about the licensure of this business.
Okay. Do they have a business license now? They do not have a business license?
No, sir.
And you're operating now without a business license, is that correct?
Well, we thought that we could have personal events.
What was?
Personal event?
Yes. We didn't know that we couldn't have a personal event.
Was this a personal event that you had?
Well, we had, yeah, we had a pop-up shop.
A what?
A pop-up shop.
That sounds like me. That's open to the public.
Yes.
Was it? Pop-up shop? What exactly is that?
Where we allowed people to come in and sell different items.
Okay, so it's kind of like a swap meet or a flea market type thing?
Yes.
Okay. Did you make revenue off of it? Did you charge rental space?
Yes.
Therefore, you're doing business.
Okay.
So you should have a business license in order to do that. And, you know, I know I carried this over two weeks. I wanted to look at the location. It's fine, but what I'm getting at is, in the work session, what I understand is some pictures and videos of some activities that's going on that's outside of the swap meet that might be more like a club entertainment type thing. And, you know, and we got a lot of those things, these things coming up on the agenda tonight for event center. To me personally, I think it's a looparound or getting a liquor license to operate a club lounge.
Oh, no.
No, no. I'm just saying that's what I think the looparound, because I understand the rental, if I'm going to advertise and I rent it out to XYZ, and they come in and throw drop to your pop type party, you're still the owner and responsible for that event that goes on within that organization. So I understand the rental, and the big thing we passed the ordinance a couple of months ago about these event centers, you can't serve alcohol or sell alcohol, and so that's the BYOB thing that comes into the play, and that's illegal. So I kind of understand, and I kind of held that up, but we got some stuff from revenue. If you guys want to continue, then we'll make a decision after that.
Right. For this particular location, we also had advertisements, October 30th, of BOOS and BOOS, BOOS being B-O-O-S and BOOOZ-E, and it says paint and silk. And there's a pictorial of a martini glass with a liquor bottle. The pop-up shop, which was mentioned, while per se every participant of that shop didn't appear to have alcoholic beverages, there were some that did. And of course, that, without an ABC permit, to have such, you know, that could be gone. As far as, as far as the one on October, we canceled that. Yeah, it was. We figured that we couldn't have it, so we canceled it. The pop-up shop, was then, did any of your participants or vendors sell liquor? Because we do have pictures of that. Yes, ma'am. She had a license. She had a warranty, so we thought that her license would cover. She had something, she had a license for it.
Who had a license?
The one that was selling the wine. No. This particular person, we have the information, they're not licensed.
Okay.
Have liquor. What was her name? The name of the Barbara's Adult Drinks? Oh, no, she didn't. I'm sorry. I thought you was talking about, since it's.
Well, you don't have a license. She didn't have a license. We got a problem.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
And we're moving. And I think this going forward, what happens, like I say, even if we granted you a license, you're responsible for the activity that goes on within your facility. So you might have not put out the advertiser, but the people that you so-called may be leasing to for this event center is putting this advertising out, which comes back and reflect your licenses.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I know event centers happen and things of that nature, but when you're doing those type thing, you're totally responsible.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, instead of being an event center, if you was coming for a license, why not come for a retail liquor license?
Yes, sir.
Or the legitimate way to run a club bar?
We. Well, I would just like to say, it's never in our intent to allow someone to come in and bring alcohol as far as like parties and stuff like that, so I did want to. So do we need to apply for alcohol licenses as well?
But how did these events get to that point?
Well, it was just that one, that one.
He ain't about three.
No, the one that she was talking about, it was canceled, because we had been in the process of getting our business license, and so once we said, okay, we can't get our business license until we are coming before you all, that's when we canceled and said we were not having that.
Any questions for the council?
Anybody got a question? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Although I'm pro-business, I'm going to move to deny approving an event center for this location.
All, all, all approve, all? Raise your hand.
Moving for deny.
Move to deny.
What?
So what are our?
Okay, hold your hands up so I can get a count. Everybody, hold your hands up. It's probably unanimous.
Okay.
So what was your question, ma'am?
What is our next step as far as?
I mean, in that, in that location, I mean, understanding what the advertisement is saying, if you're going to come before this council, I would prefer that you come legitimately saying, hey, if I want to operate a lounge, come, and then we'll have a public hearing on that. But for an event center that's operating as a lounge or a club, or entertainment center, right now, that's not something that we want in that location. If you're going to come and we can look at it in another way, I'm willing to look at it with that, but just to say I'm going to be blindly saying I'm going to allow an event center that's going to operate as a club, I'm not going to do that.
Yeah, we didn't, that wasn't our intention, so that's what we feel, that we were trying to deceive the council, and then we apologized, because that's not what we're trying.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Thank you.
Item six, ordinance reapproaching council districts 1 through 9 for the City of Montgomery.
Council, we have a work session on the 14th, 3:30, to openly talk about what we're going to do, and if you got anybody, any other suggestions, please let the council bring those to us, okay?
Okay. All right, Mr. President.
All right, number seven.
And also, there will be a public hearing on December the 21st, the next council meeting.
Right. Okay.
Number seven, ordinance authorizing the operation of a medical cannabis dispensary within the corporate limits of the City of Montgomery.
All right, Mr. Calhoun, you got it. Anything you want to talk about this?
Mr. President, this ordinance came about by, at the legal municipality, I mean, it came about with legal marijuana, medical marijuana being passed by the State House. Dispensaries are looking for cities to go, be proactive ahead of the game and saying, hey, we're open for business. It's an opportunity to create economic development and an opportunity to create jobs within the city. They're not looking at bringing a dispensary into a city that's not willing to say, hey, we're willing to do business. It's taxable, it creates about 100, 200 jobs within the city, and I'm just trying to be proactive and want this council to be proactive going forward, to saying we're open for business.
Mr. Calhoun? Question for you. We will be able to come back and do any revisiting on this for restrictions?
Yes. Any dispensary that come will have to apply for a business license, and we could talk about the taxes and those things at that time on that, on that.
Yes, sir.
Also, Ms. Calhoun, I'm concerned about them becoming like liquor stores on every corner in certain areas of town, so we want to make sure, I don't know if that's something we need to put a language in.
I think, I think.
Put a language now, or?
I think in the, in the ordinance, well, in the law from the state, it's only going to be five dispensaries throughout the state.
How many?
Five.
And you said it's going, but you said it's going to create how many jobs again?
That's it?
You, you said something about how many jobs?
It's, it's hundreds, two hun- two hundred jobs in the dispensary.
In Montgomery?
In Montgomery. That'd be one location. There's only gonna be five allowed within the state of Alabama.
And we saying two hundred jobs and one dispensary?
It's a big dispensary. It's not small. It's not a small park like the ABC store. Those are not what we're talking about.
Medical one.
Hmm?
Medical one.
Well, I, you can, you can get the other kind off in the street corner, but I'm not talking about, I'm talking about medical marijuana here.
You want the one where, you want the one where tax, okay?
All right.
We, if somebody in the audience, I can't read your name. Vanzetta Sammons or something?
Yeah.
Want to discuss this? I can't, I have a hard time reading the name here. Your name for the record?
I'm sorry?
Your name for the record, please?
I can't...
Give me your name, please.
Fenita Garner.
Okay. Now, what's your name?
I just wanted to express my positive vote for the cannabis dispensary on behalf of everybody who lives in chronic pain. And, um, it's, it provides an additional option for their pain management. And I knew somebody who highly recommended it, and I'm very excited to hear that Montgomery would do this.
Very good. Thank you so much, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, council, you got any more questions? Any motion?
Mr. President, move to the dock.
Move to suspend rules.
Oh, all right.
All right, raise your hand.
I'm trying to help Bradley real quick.
Hurry up. Well, you said, you said it's coming back before I told you.
Coming back, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Move to the dock.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is, ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Item eight, ordinance granting a license to construct, install, and maintain existing steel stairs and canopy over a portion of municipal right-of-way at five oh one North Period Street project for the Equal Justice Initiative.
Any motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Any motion to dock?
Move to dock.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted.
The gentleman too is excited.
Item nine, resolution consenting to the transfer of control of a franchise from Troy Cable Vision, Inc. to Telpac Networks, Inc., doing business as C-Spire.
Any motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President, move to dock.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item ten, application for a business license for an event center rental hall doing business as just cause, thirty-seven twenty-four Eastern Boulevard.
Okay. Representative for this particular hall here, Game Day LAC, Jesus Event Center. Representative here for that. Anybody saw the hall? We haven't had anybody here represent?
Ayesha Day.
She's gonna carry it over.
Ayesha Day, is Mrs. Day here present?
No, Ayesha Day? I don't see where she signed up at all. Okay. All right, just deny it. Say that, uh, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, can we hear what the revenue department...
Yeah, go ahead and tell us what you, I'm sorry.
Well, our contentions are basically the same as they were for the, um, the previous, uh, owner. We have extensive footage of activities that are taking place in that locality where there is no licensing established at all.
Okay.
And, uh, it's inconsistent with a rental hall.
Enough said. If not, they ain't got a license?
No, sir.
Then you go, then you go away, okay? Y'all heard enough? Give me a, give me a...
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President, mo- motion to deny?
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is denied. Eleven, application for a business license for an event center rental hall doing business as Amora Place, twenty-eight thirty-four West Edgemont Avenue.
Can representative of Amora Place here, please? Ladies, how y'all feel about this?
I get the word came out.
We feel the same way.
They ain't show up.
For all of the items, for ten, eleven, and twelve, it's the exact same situation.
Exact same thing? Okay. Any motion to suspend rules?
And Mrs. Bates called me today and said she was wanting to be here.
Ms. Bates, you here? Number eleven.
But Ms. Bates says she number twelve. Number eleven ain't here?
Ms. Bates, you're on number eleven. Ms. Bates?
Bates is the lady. Ayesha Bates, is that you?
Amora Place. Amora Place. Yes, not. Okay, any motion?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to deny?
All right, raise your hand.
Now, I got a question.
Unanimous. Resolution is denied.
So if they, if they continue to operate, what do we, 'cause we, there need to be some recourse. We've denied them their application here today, but they don't need to continue to have parties. So what do we do? Do we need to make sure if someone see that, that they're dialing out one morning to get the police out? Or is it more something that we need to send to the business department?
Well, when they're operating, our office is closed. We're not open, so we would have to partner with the police department to work on it.
Please do.
Okay.
Please do.
Hang on, Charlie. I don't think that answered anybody's question.
Well, I think, I think the reality of it, I don't think we have an ordinance that, if, that they can enforce that rights, chief.
Right. And that's one of the things that we spoke about in the work session, what would assist law enforcement was shutting down the facility. I think that's the solution that everybody's looking for. If there was a cease and desist letter or they're not showing denial of their business license, at that point, we can tell them that they don't have a license to operate and ask that they shut down. The only issue is we run into the, the way the ordinance has written itself beyond that.
Well, let me, let me ask you this, mayor. Can, can the power of the mayor have enough to write a ce- cease and desist order based on what your, what your...
I believe, I believe we do.
With the revenue department already telling you that, you write that and then give it to the police department. They got something to work with. That good, chief?
Yes, that's good. And we, we discussed that in some other, um, looking at how we'll approach this issue down the road.
We changed the ordinance, but I think in the, in the meantime, a letter from cease and desist from the mayor today, and then the police department handed it out to them. You can put the cuffs on them, okay?
Well, it still goes back to this being an administrative violation with licensing. Um, when we tell them they can have to shut down and it's based on a cease and desist, beyond that, because we're enforcing an administrative ordinance that's on the book, it runs into the issue of, if they continue to operate, then the question for everybody else is why not arrest them? Um, on, on what grounds at that point when you look at the ordinance? So that's why we're asking also to add a little more enforcement in the ordinance.
Okay. Well, we get the ordinance to us, we'll get it, get it done.
And it is, and arrest may not, it is not the only thing. I mean, it can be, it can be a fine.
Yeah.
It could be sus- uh, suspended. So there, there are other steps we need to take before we get to the...
Yeah, I just, and you, and you cease and desist right in the, it's gonna charge you five hundred dollars if you don't close up.
Right. And revenue, we've already established on their...
You do that?
With Tracy, a cease and desist order that we can, we can actually issue to them if they're noncompliant.
Okay.
And then, um, after a period of time, then we can actually take them before, um, circuit.
Okay. Well, I know we probably go get it in court anyway. That's okay.
And then if the action is willful, and as our ordinance defines willfulness, is the continuation of said business after having been notified that you're operating without a license and, and in contradiction to the ordinance, then it becomes criminal if in our ordinance.
These people are taking advantage of us. We need to stop it.
Put their hand close on them.
There you go.
Yes.
Cover them up. All right. Chief, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. All right, number...
Item number twelve, application for business license for an event center rental hall doing business as Summerlin's Place, three fifteen West Fleming Road.
Okay, now, Ms. Summerlin, okay. Now, tell us about your place. Ladies, you got the same issue there too?
We do. We have, uh, we're showing activities, um, from the, uh, social media platform where they've conducted activities, um, it seems as late as November the twenty-seventh, um, where alcohol in the, um, the pictures that we have, alcohol was, was being served. Um, there was something, uh, an activity in relation to the iron bowl where activity, uh, shows that alcohol, I believe, was served as well. So they are conducting these activities without a business license.
No business license at all. Okay.
That was a private birthday party.
You don't have a business license for the business, though?
No, that was a private, no, sir. That was a private birthday party.
Well, if you, if you own the business, you own the building, you have to...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I do.
Well, state your name, state your name.
Give me your name.
Ibra Summerlin.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, you got questions, Mr. Summerlin?
Yes, sir. It was a private business. It was a private party for my husband.
Okay, so it was your party. You didn't rent it to someone. It was just your own party.
No, it's my own party. When I, when I, when I came to get my license, when I came to talk to me, I had told him about it, the guy.
And did you, did you charge anybody to come in the building?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay. Well, is that different?
Now, on the advertisement that we're showing, it indicates that there were, uh, there was an inbox for tickets.
We did not charge. He was told not to charge. That wasn't what we were doing. First, it was told we couldn't. Now, I, I can say this. I did.
There you go, Hannah. Okay. Anybody got any more questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Summerlin, um, thank you. I received several calls about this and, you know, I looked into it and, and what kinda puzzled me, both names were Summerlin. You know, the church is ran by the Summerlins, the property that you guys own is ran by the Summerlin, and it's just like it's on the same property. And, and what happened, I understand you guys been operating about a year?
Huh?
About a year you been in operation?
We still renovating. You can see the garbage thing outside. We're still renovating.
Okay. But it's just like the, the previous one. You're operating, you're, you're responsible for the business, whether you're doing private parties, you're... These are not house parties. These are event centers that operate before you get a license. And what we're doing, we're, we're running into these situations where we're coming up with event centers, we throw parties, I can rent them out. I don't have a business license, so, I mean, I just don't see, wha- what's the workaround on, on these type things? I'm getting complaints about from the church, about the activities. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just a vo- I'm just the ear.
When, no, sir. When the church is over there, we don't even go over there to work. We go work on Fridays and Saturdays. I'm a nurse at the prison. We work, he works a hundred day. We be at work.
Okay.
When the per- when the church is open, we don't do our business. We don't go over there and tear up and knock, top, knock down trees. You can see, you got a big old garbage can out there. We're still working on it. It's a working process. It's... I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse eighteen years. He works a hundred day. We work. It's not like we have money to pour in, just go in and just finish it. It's two people working together. Now, I can say this. With somebody, I'm saying, I'm there. I have, I have the community. I have, I, I used to do, um, what is it? Each one teach one. I used to donate to, uh, crime stoppers. Stop the violence, all that. I still donate. I still give. I don't understand what's the...
Ms. Summerlin, this, this, this is, this is the issue that I understand. In an event center, if you own it, I mean, you, in my thought of it, you running your own events.
That's right.
Well, if you doing it, you promoting it, you do it, so you're responsible.
Yes, sir.
When you lease it, other people become, they're advertising what they're doing. So now, it's about you pay me a rental and you allow me to do what I do in your business.
Yes, sir.
But you're still responsible. I done seen that happen in a lot of places here in Montgomery, even some clubs that rented the place out to a promoter and then they end up losing their license because it's about dollars and it's not what don't make sense. My, my ideal event center, I mean, you own it, you run the events out of your sense, out of your center where you're totally responsible. What we're hearing on this advertisement is not what's happening. And, and you know, the complaints are coming before and, and about these type thing, and it's just the ones before, it's the same situation. Our revenue department is telling us that, hey, we're seeing this advertisement going on. I've seen some of the advertisement in, in the emails that I received today. So, you know, I, I just don't see what we're doing. I'm just thinking about when we look at event center, it's something that you own and you run. So if you come by to get a, a event where Mickey Mouse and the game is coming in. So you bring them in and you get the license to, to tell for that event, not just open market where I can come in and rent it and I can do whatever I wanna do on your facilities. And that, that's what I see is happening with a lot of these event centers and, and there's no loophole around it. And then when you come by the liquor license, you know, we run into that thing where you're next door to a church.
Yeah. And with that, have you had conversation with the church and with the community right around? Because you...
It's present.
Okay, and so they're in agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, none of them are here, though, are they?
No, ma'am.
Oh.
So you say they're in agreement?
Yes.
And that's the community and the church? Cause it's a neighborhood right there, too?
Yeah, we, we, we walk around the community and everybody. We talk to everybody.
Actually, we've, um, um, been thanked by a lot of the people. I'm not just saying that. But, um, if you pull up a picture of the old building, it, it was tedious. Um, we actually, um, cleaned it out, gave it a facelift, cleaned around it. The place used to be an old, um, construction company, so, you know, it was just, it, it took us thirteen dumpsters to clean that building, that lot. We had one last dumpster there to finish cleaning the lot. We've done all the, uh, around the neighbor, neighboring houses. The fence lines was li- littered, literally, littered. Old, old, um, it was an old construction site, so it had old commo, old doors. I mean, it was thirteen dumpsters. That's not an exaggeration. That's for real. So that in itself is an improvement. We're gonna continue to be an improvement. We're gonna continue to be where people are glad to see us and that we can work inside community. We wanna have a place where they can have their family reunions and, and enjoy themselves. It's structured among that. It's two pavilions, uh, where's the, um, the pavilion and a patio area for the grills and all that stuff. Yeah, the lot is two acres wide. That's what we're aiming at.
So I, I have one question. Um, my one question is, you know, we have a new ordinance that don't allow you to have any alcohol on your premises. How do you think you're gonna recruit your money if you trying to advertise that and you have to tell people, hey, if you having a wedding here, we cannot have any alcohol. If you having a party, we cannot have any alcohol. How do you plan to recruit, knowing that you cannot have any alcohol on your premises? That's whether giving it away free, that's way somebody saying they have a license, you cannot bring any alcohol on your premises.
Well, first of all, we're an event venue, so, um, we're not a, we're not a, we're not a, um, we're not a club or anything anyway, so it's not a part of our, uh, structure. I don't know what else to tell you about that.
Good question.
I just want to clarify.
Any more questions?
Yeah, let's clarify this.
The events, and you, the guests or whoever having an event, they can bring it, but they can't sell it. Is that the rule? Or you just can't have it in the building?
If you have a caterer, your caterer has to hold an ABC license to be a, or, excuse me, a bartender. We have some mobile bartenders that hold an ABC license just for such. You cannot, your guest cannot bring liquor to any events in the city of Montgomery.
Well, you have a...
Well, it happens if there's no bartender, no open bar and all that, and they just bring it with them.
They cannot. There's an ordinance against it.
Can't do it, period. Okay.
Does the city put an ordinance, you cannot bring your own brown, your brown bag? It's a city ordinance. But they can make application. They can make application.
Bro, they can apply for a liquor license.
They can make an application for a liquor license.
For a special event, just for an event.
Right.
So you, so what they're saying is you yourself in your location necessarily don't even have to have a liquor license. The people that coming in and rent for events.
Speak up, speak into the microphone.
I was told the city, when I went to get my license, that we had to have our own liquor license.
You do.
Yes, you do, as...
You do.
As an event.
According to the ordinance that the city established, the, the building itself has to have a liquor license. There has to be one at that location and be...
For, for patrons.
To serve or sell or whatever.
And that's, that's in order for the patrons to consume on premises, right? Yeah. So, um...
Yeah.
First of all, we're new to this, so we're not sure how, um, it goes about, do the patron have to, um, get permission or whatever to have, um, alcohol or consume alcohol? But we were instructed that in order for our patrons to be able to consume alcohol, um, that we had to get a liquor license. We don't have a problem getting a liquor license for them to consume alcohol. We don't have any intention on selling it.
Two fifty...
They're close to church, huh?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna call for the question.
I, I...
I think. I, I, you know, I, I, I receive the calls and I understand what you're trying to say. And as I said earlier, I'm pro-business. I just think this is not the way. If you gonna do an event center, go ahead and apply for an event center where you have your liquor license. So if you leasing it out, it's upon your, your, your call of who you renting out to and you're responsible for doing it. But in this form that is coming before the city council, I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Have motion to suspend rules?
When I applied, it was before twenty-sixth. It was before then. And I told him, and he told me I would be seeing that Tuesday when I'm fired downtown.
I have a motion on the floor. Motion on the floor.
Mr. President, have we suspended the rules?
We have not.
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
All right, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President, move to deny.
All right, raise your hand.
Mr. Lyons, unanimous.
Motion denied.
The, uh, resolution is denied.
Very good.
So what do I do now? Do I go, what do I do?
You gotta re- re- license what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
Do I have to apply again or what?
You need to apply again.
Reapply?
You can reapply for what you're really doing.
Ms. Ms. Summerlin, and I think, and I know Mr. Summerlin and Mrs. Summerlin, the pastor of the church, I think you guys need to sit down and talk because I know you're saying that they're in favor of it, but they're saying that they're not. What, what puzzled me when I saw your name on here, Summerlin, I'm like, what, are they family? And I understand the family. So I think there needs to be some communication there. Just my suggestion to figure out what you're trying to do. And, and some, like, you know, 'cause the church do weddings, you guys possibly can do wedding receptions. You know, a partnership there where you might need a, a liquor license to do a wedding reception. So people rent your place, they can say, hey, we gonna come over here. I own my liquor license, so, you know, you got your caterer and your bartender that you can offer that, that services to your customers. But to just do a blanket, you know, that's just not, not where we at right now.
So basically, I would deny it based on the liquor license? I mean, what is...
I mean, yes, you, you're asking for an event center, but we, knowing by the advertising that's going on, liquor is being served on these premises. You know, whether you bringing it or whatever we need to do. You know, it's doing that. So if we gonna do it, let's do it the right way.
Get your liquor license.
Let's do it the right way.
That's the next step.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Can, can I just add one thing to what Pro Tem mentioned? Uh, just one other thing. You all may not be aware of this, but, but there, there are some people that are on Facebook right now sharing that they are selling tickets to the event. So you also have to make sure that whatever you apply for when you come down, that it is gonna be in the right category if someone is saying they're gonna sell tickets and have that event at your place. That, that's on social media right now. So you all may not be aware of that, but some of the people that maybe renting out to are selling tickets. That's not applicable, I think, what the council's also saying. So we just need to make sure that, we'll try to do a better job of educating people like yourself and informing you of what comes under different license structures, uh, and profiles, so you know kind of what it is. And then from your standpoint as an owner, what you have to share with people or as a manager, or whoever's kind of booking the events, this is what's allowed, this is what's not, because then you gonna end up right back down here in front of the council, and that's not what any of us want.
Okay, but I'm lost, because I went to ABC, I went downtown, I'm lost. So I'm trying to understand, what do I need to do now? Because I'm trying to start taking rentals, I don't know what that supposed to do now. So I supposed to go back to the ABC board, come back to you guys? What do I do?
Initially, we were told to come here first, and then...
I went to ABC board, they told me to go to the city. City told me that I'll be seeing that Tuesday, which is ended up being almost a month out. I mean, I'm lost. I mean, you're tying my hands, I don't know which way you want me to go.
And you know, Mr. President...
Ms. Summerlin, if you would come down to us tomorrow, we, we will sit down with you and we will just go through the steps, so you'll know exactly what you'll need to do.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, that's good. But let me say this too as well, when you go through those steps, just like, uh, President Pro Tem said, we wanna see some kind of interaction from the church and the community around you as well, knowing that they're in agreement, cause that's at a community. I mean, it's in a neighborhood. It's not like on the main busy boulevard, that, that's a community all around you, there's houses. And, and you know, a church on that side, but on the other side, it's houses. So I would like to see, uh, and President Pro Tem talked about the church, but we like to see the community involvement as well. We, we wanna hear from them as well.
Okay, that's fine.
By the time you make it back to us, have had some conversations and have them here.
Paper, paperwork or something, or did they actually phone?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next item.
Item thirteen, application for a business license for an event center rental hall doing business as TKJ and Companies at one eighty-one F Eastern Boulevard.
Terrence Johnson and Avanda Johnson? Okay, same problem there?
We actually, no, we actually have no contentions with this particular venue. Um, they, um, have had, they've had non-alcoholic events at that location. Um, I think they've had some events that's involving a daycare and also a food entry. Um, so we don't really have any contentions with them as far as alcohol is concerned.
Like, I hear that.
But they've been already having events at the building without a license?
No, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Terrence Johnson, this is Avendra Johnson. We haven't had any events for sale or rent. That was an employee meeting for employees with the State Department of Human Resources. They came and did a lecture on the new minimum standards for daycare centers in the state of Alabama. And other than that, Tuskegee University, they didn't rent anything. We fed them for free for the Turkey Day Classic. We fed them for Thanksgiving dinner so the children won't go home hungry. Those are the only two things we have done there. We haven't rented anything out.
Okay. Any other questions? Counsel, questions? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Are you planning on having alcohol in the future?
We will apply. We're, what we would like to do is have weddings and meetings. It's a professional business center.
I got you. I got you.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President, motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with business.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, application for a business license for an event center rental hall doing business as exotic lounge of Montgomery at twenty-one Coliseum Boulevard.
Okay. This one's got your name for the record, please, let's talk to you.
This business was actually...
My name is Quetisha Ziegler.
And you are?
Travis Ziegler, my husband.
Travis, okay, very good.
This business is actually licensed to do consulting, uh, business. However, um, we have found, uh, based on footage from the, um, social media platforms that they have been actually conducting activities, um, that involve alcohol and all other types of activities.
Okay. Counsel get questions of the...
Is that, is that correct? Have y'all been conducting activities that have alcohol involved?
Okay, so it's, it's, um, the business is, the reason why she says it already has a business is because I have a consultant business that I use the business address for. Um, it is not open yet. Um, we have had, uh, um, family gathering there before. It's not being used for anything other than that. I have applied for a liquor license. Um, I have also, um, did all of the things that I need to do. Um, I was misinformed about the steps of how to do this. This is our first business venture. So once I figured the, uh, steps out, talking to Mr. Jeremy Peterson, um, about maybe three weeks ago, less than three weeks, I have completed all of the tasks, including, um, applying for ABC license.
So your, your intention is you wanna have a lounge there?
I wanna have a, a event center lounge. It, it is a lounge. Um, it's registered as a lounge. Um, I do, um, rent it, uh, want, want to rent it out whenever there, you know, is, is possible. But it is a lounge, and has been a lounge for over fifty years.
Our issue was the, uh, initial license. Uh, the initial license that, uh, uh, the applicant spoke of was for a consultant.
Correct.
But it was for a no physical location, which generally means that it's operated out of the home or away from a commercial location.
So she needs a license for that particular location?
Yes, she needed a commercial license, and the person, we, we checked with the, uh, the, the processor that processed that particular license, and they said that he was, he said he was told that this was, uh, no particular location. So that's where our, uh, one of our concerns came in, is that he issued a license for a consultant to find or receive information of other things going on in that particular commercial location.
Okay, and she's saying that she wants to have something different? So she needs to change her license?
Uh, well, she, she needs to change the license, but application was made, once again, under, under the, uh, understanding that this was no physical location in a consultant.
She didn't have a...
Those are two different things. So my, like, like I previously stated, so my reason for that is because on the back of exotic lounge, there is a, kind of like a she shed. So that is the reason why I was going to use that, because it is a she shed back there.
Well, normally, we don't, we don't license commercial locations as no physical location. That would be someone that's operating out of their home, let's say it's an online type business, or a consultant. They may have a home office. So it gave the implication that this business, the consultant's business, was being operated at no physical location.
Oh, no, 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 definitely not.
Okay.
Okay, let, let's go back, let's go back. Is this the one, Ms. Blalot, that you told us have not had a, a, um, hasn't operated as a lounge in...
Yeah, that's Chinese joke.
In nine months.
In how many years?
Nine months.
Nine month?
Yes, we, the previous owner closed it January the thirty-first, we got it, uh, February the second.
Okay, so they had a business license in twenty twenty, is what we're saying, for a lounge?
Twenty twenty-one?
I was told we shut this thing, shut this one down.
Twenty twenty, okay, so this is not the one.
They didn't shut it down. They, they, they wanted to make a shut it down. They, they've been a low profile bar for a long time.
Yeah, really low.
So, Mr. President, Mr. Mr. Lyons, so, in, in revenue, what I'm looking at on this, on this, it says for a, a event center rental hall and exec, ex, exotic lounge.
Uh huh.
So if, I mean, why not just apply for a lounge license?
I already, I already applied. I'm, I'm just doing whatever, like I said, I've been misinformed. I'm doing what everybody else is telling me to do. So I already applied for the liquor license, gotten all of the, everything else that I needed, and they told me that I had to get a business license, so I had to come in before you guys to do so.
So you have a liquor license?
No, no.
No, I don't have the liquor license yet. I applied for it and I was, um, well, actually talking to Amy, um, earlier today to get the poster board for it.
The problem we got here is that you've got a consultant license, you do not have a license for rental hall.
Correct.
Okay, you need to change that license, and then get your liquor license, and you're good to go.
Well, this one says, I'm looking at the license, it's an application for event center lounge, in our package.
Yes.
Is that what it is now?
Is it your intention to just do an event hall and do periodic events? Or you gonna run this thing as a, a bar open seven days a week?
So it, my, my plan is to do it periodically where I'm opening up to, you know, do events for whatever I might have. But later down the line, I do want to open the lounge up, but not seven days a week, just maybe Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, or something like that. It's nothing of what, I guess I, I don't know, I, I'm really confused about all this.
Even if we approved it as a lounge, I mean, I'd have to have some kind of, uh, limits on the operating hours, cause this right in the...
Yeah, about two AM.
And plus, you gotta get past that, uh, variance thing, I guess.
Yes, I, um, submitted...
A residential neighborhood, that thing packs right up the houses.
They shut down.
They shut down.
They shut down.
That's what I was told.
It's gotta be a year.
They ain't got a license yet, though. Okay, so...
Cause we was under the impression that it was grandfathered in, uh, as far as the, the variance situation. We was under that impression, uh, because it has been a bar for over fifty years. That's all it was ever owned and operated as.
So...
They need to have a license before we can approve, correct?
Yeah, they gotta have a business license before we can approve any of this.
Okay, this is for business license.
I know.
Does this change the business license?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mr. Lyons, and what I'm understanding, if you purchased it in February of twenty twenty-one,
Yes.
it was closed in January, so basically, it was like a change of ownership.
It was a change of ownership.
But the license didn't transfer.
Prior owner gutted the place out, so we had to spend eight months getting it back up to where we can pass inspections.
So...
Okay.
So basically, Ms. Lyons, I mean, it's, it's your district, but I'm asking, what I'm looking at, is they need to apply for, if you gonna operate as a lounge, you need to be applying for a business, a retail, well, uh, lounge retail license to operate the business, not a event center lounge. You need to just be applying for your application for liquor license and your lounge license all at one time.
So I've, I've already submitted the ABC liquor license part, so I guess it's just I need to go back downtown and apply for the, um, the lounge license.
Well, the concern is that, um, there is advertisement that this is a true exotic pop-up hooker lounge?
No, 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 no. True exotic pop-up hooker lounge, that, that belongs to someone named Jamar. That has nothing to do with me.
That's on your Facebook picture.
No, uh, the, the pop-up lounge is for, it belongs to somebody else. And we were, I'm sorry. Uh, I can't hear you.
Did they use your seminar to do the pop-up lounge?
No, uh-uh.
But you saying that...
It belong, it belongs to Jamar, I think his name is Jamar Stevens or something. He owns, uh, exotic pop-up lounge.
So where is she at?
The location of the particular event that we're speaking of, who really said twenty-one Coliseum Boulevard?
I see exactly what you're looking at. What you're looking at, what she's actually looking at, you guys, is us preparing promotion, not saying that we're opening, but this is what we're planning on doing in the near future. It has nothing to do with us being open.
Music.
You gonna be a hooker lounge?
No, 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 it, it wasn't a hooker lounge at all.
Mr. Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ziegler, what, what, what I think needs to happen, if you need to withdraw this application, come back, apply for the, uh, liquor license, lounge liquor license for this location.
I agree.
Okay.
And, and that will be something that we can get away from the event center. You come in for one license, where you gonna be responsible for that location, twenty-one Coliseum Boulevard.
But I, I do, I would like you to reach out to the Eastbrook Morning View Neighborhood Association and the Dow...
Yes, sir. Are you Mr. Mr. Lyons? I've called you three times and left a message for you.
Yeah, I talked to you during the summer.
Yeah, you talked to me a while ago, but all of these weeks, I've been calling you. So I've been trying to reach out to you to find out what I needed to do.
Okay, I think we got, we got a plan, okay? Go back and do what Mr. Calhoun said.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, okay, let, we're gonna, we're gonna...
We just withdraw it.
We're gonna withdraw it, okay? We draw fourteen.
Pam, Pam, can I ask you a question? Cause we have a lot of them reach out to us and asking what are the steps? And it is a lot of, do this and do that. Can we have what the actual steps are, so we can properly educate the public on how they apply for these business licenses?
Certainly, yeah. We, we two are, uh, coming across the same issue, and we're suggesting the same thing, uh, within our office.
Thank you.
So we do realize the public does need educating on...
So this is the day, if she's wanting to open an event center and have a lounge license to go accompany with the event center, she can go that route, or she can go the route of doing a lounge liquor...
Like a restaurant?
Restaurant slash bar type.
Part, part, part of, I mean, I'm even confused. Part of the problem is, people don't know the limitations and restrictions on the different licenses. So what, what, what we're trying to do, what we'd like to do is to put out the different licenses, what you can do. Check this, X that, make it at a very, very, very basic level, so people understand. They're getting third, fourth, fifth-hand information about what to do, and, and it's ending up here in front of y'all. So we got what to do, simplify that, and then put it out there very easily and quickly for them to find.
That's the problem I've had, I could have done, I could have done all of this stuff months ago, but I'm getting, here, this person says this, this person says this, go to that person, do this first, no, you can't do that. So that leads me here, and leads me going until ten months of paying for a building that I can't even make money off of.
Yes, ma'am, just withdraw this and come back before the council.
We, we, we want you to ask you to withdraw this. Will you agree to withdraw it?
Yes, yes, sir, and I'll apply for the right one. And I'll do that tomorrow.
All right, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Number fifteen.
Application for retail beer and retail table one, off premises only, doing business as Ann Street Food Market at eleven fifteen Ann Street.
Representative Ann Street Food Market, here, please. Ann Street Food Market. Ms. Petteau. Your name for the record, sir?
Raj Patel.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and anyone that likes to get this item, please come forward. Seeing none, if that public hearing's been held, talk for the council, need a motion?
Mr. President, motion to adopt.
Have most of...
Approved.
Sub, sub, have most to suspend the rules? All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
All right, need a motion to adopt?
A motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item fourteen, application for retail beer and retail table one, off premises only, doing business as Old Selma.
Sixteen. Sixteen.
What did I say?
Fourteen.
Catch up, Brenda, catch up.
I'm backing y'all.
Getting late, girl, getting late, okay, go. All right.
Sixteen, application for retail beer and retail table one, off premises only, doing business as Old Summer Road Butcher Market, sixty-two hundred Old Summer Road.
Representative Butcher Markin over on Old Summer Road, please. Your name for the record, sir?
Dex Patel.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and anyone that likes to get this item, please come forward. Seeing none, if that public hearing's been held, talk for the council, need a motion?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Have most to suspend the rules, all in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
I'll pray raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Get up with your business, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Item seventeen, resolution appointing Natalie Weary Wright to the museum board.
Ms. Graham?
Move to suspend the rule, I'm, of the rest of the agenda?
All right, I'll pray raise your hand.
I want to take these items one by one.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt, you're overruled.
Have most adopted, I'll pray?
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item eighteen, resolution concurring in the reappointment of Frank Jenkins to the Board of Directors of Human Resources.
And most adopt?
Mr. President, move to adopt.
I'll pray raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item nineteen, resolution concurring in the reappointment of Paulette Thompson to the Board of Directors of Human Resources.
President, move to adopt.
I'll pray raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item twenty, appeal of demolition of fifteen seventeen West Street by Keith and Bridget, Bridget Osborne.
Bridget and Keith Osborne here, please?
They're not here.
They're not here? Okay.
So...
Keith and Bridget Osborne, okay, not here, we're...
So we need to, motion to uphold?
You need to deny the appeal.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion to deny?
I'll pray raise your hand.
Unanimous. The appeal is denied. Item twenty-one, pursuant to section eleven fifty-three V one Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at listed locations.
Okay, we have somebody wants to speak on this item, Ted Watkins, Joanna Madison? Which one are you? Which item are you talking about? Yes, your name, please?
My name is Joanna Madison.
Okay, and which item are you here for?
It's going to be sixteen thirty-three and sixteen thirty-seven North Ripley Street.
Okay, and...
Sixteen thirty-three and thirty-seven North Ripley.
The last two, North Ripley Street. Okay. Mr. Carl, what's going on here?
Mr. President, these people have served a letter back in May of twenty twenty. They requested some more time in June of twenty twenty, and based on no repairs to this date, we'd ask that the council would approve demolition tonight.
Okay.
We'll be happy to try and work with them, we'll follow it.
So you were told, told a year ago to work on it, they have not worked on it. Am I correct?
That's true.
Okay.
Mr...
Counsel, get a question?
Do we have any pictures?
No, you don't get any pictures of this?
Do we have any pictures?
Yes, Mike, I believe, no, no, we do not have pictures of this one.
Okay.
We weren't aware that they were going to show up tonight.
You've had a year to work on it. Tell me why you haven't worked on it?
They're in your pocket.
You've had a year to work on it?
Yes, sir. I actually had three different contractors who I've given money to, who has actually taken my money. So I finally did get a contractor who I've actually had success with, who's actually put a roof on it. And so that contractor is finally...
He put a roof on it, this? I understand we haven't been, have no, nothing done to it.
Yes, sir. When I, I got my brother and Mr. Watkins to work with this particular contractor, because the other three contractors that I've worked with, I had no success with, and I was assuming, because I was a female who actually took my money. And so I let them deal with this new contractor, who actually started making progress. And this is the first person that we've actually been able to make progress.
Can you show us some progress in the next ninety days on these?
Hold on, Mr. President, please. How long have you owned this property?
I got, took possession of this property in May or June of twenty twenty. I just took possession of this property.
From the previous owner?
Yes, 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 ma'am. I just took possession of it.
When was the roof done?
The roof was done last two days.
Are y'all going to live in it?
Yes, ma'am. We can get it done. We can get, we can get this property done.
Are you going to live in it? Is it for you?
No, ma'am. It's not going to be, we're not going to live in it. We just want to get it up to coal.
To do what?
What are you dealing with?
Well, we, we want to, we wanted to ask what we were able to do with it, because there's a house on one side, there's also another building on the other side. And after we got the survey done, we found out through the, the lady at the, through the surveyor and Miss Wilson, I'm not sure of her title, that we were thinking we owned, it's four lots, actually, we were thinking that we owned four lots, well, two lots on this side, but we found out we owned two lots on the other side. So we've been keeping up the own property.
Thomas, where is it on Ripley Street? What's the, what is, is it next to going towards the little meat market?
Just past it.
Past the meat market? Listen, that area is in terrible condition. Riding down Ripley Street is a total eyesore. I'm glad that you bought it, but if you don't have anything in ninety days, they are going down.
Yes, ma'am.
Who was the previous owner?
It was Maddie Madison.
And that's your mother?
Yes, sir.
So the property's been in the family for years?
It's, well, actually, my father is deceased. So it, she inherited from him. And it was, he actually had it up hard to that.
Mr. President?
Ninety days? Yes, sir.
We'd recommend you uphold the demolition.
We will, and then you give it ninety days? Okay, that's good. Ninety days.
Yes, sir.
What's your intention, what you going to do with it once you fix it up?
Well, I wanted, I wanted to ask what I could do with it.
We don't know.
If you have something done in ninety days, we'll talk about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Need a motion to uphold?
Mr. President, a motion to uphold.
I'll pray raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Yeah, they come back in ninety days.
Ms. Blalock, did you hear Ms. Council Johnson? She said to come back in ninety days.
Okay. All right, number twenty-two.
Okay, I just needed to clarify, the vote is eight in one. I had a no vote that came in at the last second.
Okay.
Item twenty-two, resolution designated nuisance abatement agent.
And most adopt?
Do you got anybody who wants to speak? Mr. President, move to adopt.
I'll pray raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Twenty-three, resolution assessing the cost of abatement of unsafe structures at various locations.
And most adopt?
Anybody who wants to speak on that?
Anybody who wants to speak on this item? Not having anybody sign it.
Mr. President, motion to adopt.
I'll pray raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Twenty-four, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
I'll pray raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
I can't even turn it. I got some money we got to spend. I got some more folks I talk to.
Okay, I put before you a bunch of contingency funds, which the mayor has already approved all of these. District three, twenty-five hundred to MPS for Lee High School baseball team. Five hundred to MPS for Goodman Middle School girls' basketball team. Two thousand seven hundred and ninety to Alabama Historical Association for Historical Marpa for Willie John Temple. District four, two hundred and fifty dollars to Echo. Four thousand dollars to King's Canvas Gallery. Thirty-six hundred to Woodcrest Neighborhood Association. One thousand to Armory Learning Arts Center for Youth Program. Twenty-five hundred to Central Alabama Community Foundation. District five, two thousand to MPS for Lanier High School. Two thousand to Fortitude Leadership Academy. District six, two thousand to Plantation Estates Neighborhood Association. Two thousand to ASU for Student Media. Two thousand to ASU for Bowling Team. Two thousand to Trinum State Technical College. For District eight, one thousand to Carriage Hills Neighborhood Association. One thousand to Bell Station Neighborhood Association. One thousand to Thorington Trace Neighborhood Association. One thousand to Mental Health America. One thousand to COPS for Christmas.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
District five would like to add one thousand to COPS for Christmas.
Mr. President, District three would like to add fifteen hundred for Mental Health America and three hundred to the Lacy Boy Parade.
Three hundred to the Lacy Boyd.
Ms. Blalock, I'd like to, two fifty to the Master Gardeners, the lady was in, ladies were in here earlier.
Mr. President, one more, I'm sorry. Brenda, fifteen hundred to Brantley's Children's Home. Brantley's Children's Home.
Hey, trying to get in line at the, at the dispensary, huh?
Okay, all right.
Mr. President, I have one more, I forgot. Mr. President, Ms. Blalock?
Yes, sir.
One thousand to the Botanical Garden?
Botanical Garden?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, man, yeah. You sent a lot of people calling me.
I got, I need to say something too, also, Ms. Blalock. Let me put twenty-five hundred to the Mercer House.
I can't hear you, need you.
Twenty-five hundred to Mercer House.
Okay.
One thousand to HIM.
H I M?
Yeah, okay.
HIM over here.
Is that it?
That's it? Anybody else in motion? Mr. President? Yes, sir. Move to adopt? I'll pray raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Get it quick.
Unanimous.
All right. Talk to us tonight is Sister Knott concerning Edie Nixon Avenue.